Good evening. Welcome to our Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call Pastor Paul Andrews from Freedom Church to the podium and he'll open us with prayer.
Thank you, Lord. God, we give you praise. We give you praise for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in the capacity that you've called us. We thank you for the ability to lead. It is a gift that we've been given, Lord, and I pray that we would steward it well. God, give these leaders wisdom. Give them wisdom on the matters that are before them. I pray that you'd be with them, that they would sense your spirit, that you would be with their families, and I thank you that they conduct themselves with honor, with integrity, in a way that is befitting servants of you. I pray that you'd bless them, Lord. Bless them, bless their families, bless them for the volunteer time, the hard work they put in to make this city of Augusta a beautiful place. We give you praise for the improvements that have been happening, the confidence that is building, and I thank you, Lord God, that you continue to lead these men and women with great ideas to move this city forward. We thank you for that, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd just like to recap last week. It was a great week for the city of Augusta. We had the grand opening at our new castle park, as well as we got to open the splash pad up. Then some businesses downtown had some soft slash grand openings. We had a good turnout at the bazaar, the Brick Street Bazaar downtown Saturday. So there was just a lot of nice things going on that involved a lot of people. And once again, the castle park involved somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand people, and people from all over, not just Augusta, but there were people from Park City and Bel Air and some other communities that came and invested time and labor. And there were lots of businesses and, well, just lots of money involved and lots of nice people invested lots of money in that park. And I hope that our citizens will take care of these parks. So, thank you very much, Augusta. With that, we'll move down to looking at approving our minute meetings from the last couple of meetings. The council?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June third city council meeting and the June tenth budget work session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That moves us down to our appropriation ordinance number six dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Council?
I make a motion for the approval of the appropriation ordinance number six dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve that appropriation ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves down to our visitor section. If there's somebody here that's not on the agenda already, this would be the time to speak up. I don't believe anybody's here like that. So, first item of business, item number one, resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash oh eight. And I'll give that over to the staff.
Yes, Mayor, Council, we do have Kevin Cowan, our bond counsel here, who has assisted us with these sort of matters in the past. This is a matter of background, both for you and for the community, seeing this for the first time. We started during our strategic retreat process this year, I believe, back in February, January, whenever that first meeting happened, talking through all of the big priorities going on in our community and looking forward in the future. As we tend to do, we look out five, ten years and try to plan out our activities. And one of the things that we know that's happening in the immediate future, in the next two years, is related to our existing Pride and Progress sales tax. That sales tax was voted on in two thousand and sixteen. It has an expiration date after ten years, which is scheduled for September of two thousand and twenty-six. And the budget that we're working on this year is two thousand and twenty-five, so it's not impacting this one, but we're only a year away from the impacts. And so discussing that during the strategic retreat, the decision kind of boiled down to, let's get out ahead of the expiration and let's put information out to the community about what was achieved over that past ten years and what we were able to do with that sales tax, and consider putting out a ballot measure for the community to look at voting on that again and extending it. So, the current sales tax does expire. This one, if approved after a ballot measure, would take effect after that other one expires. So it's not a new sales tax on top of the existing tax burden. It is, you can look at it in many ways as a continuation of the one that we have in place with a slight change. And the change was related to sidewalks. The wording on the ballot measure is pretty much the same as what we've had in the past, but during our strategic retreat, council brought up how you routinely, as does staff, routinely hear from the community about the condition of the sidewalks and the desire to improve walkability in the city. And the previous sales tax did not have any explicit language that allowed you to dedicate resources to that, and you wanted to make that change and that that's the only change compared to what people have experienced for the past ten years, is you now have wording that allows for the usage of funding for sidewalks. So, that's the basis of introduction. I did work with our bond counsel, Kevin Cowan. He helped prepare the resolution, the ballot initiative, and I'd like to turn it over to him to kind of maybe walk you through some of the higher level strategic legal things that are going on, the statutory timelines and things, what happens from here if you move forward with this resolution. So, Kevin, can you walk us through all that?
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Good to be here, as always. And as always, Josh did a great job of describing some of the background. I will hit a couple of high points. If you've looked at the resolution, the whereas clauses just sort of tell the story. You have statutory authority to do this. You have an existing one cent sales tax. It's going to expire. You want to implement a new sales tax the day after the current one expires, and that's sort of the story that's told. You have the authority to do that. You'll see section three calls for the election on November fifth of this year in connection with the general election, has the ballot proposition, which, as Josh mentioned, is substantially similar to what's in place now with the addition, the one exception being the addition of the sidewalk. Improvements, section five, and this gets into some of the procedural things, there is a notice of election that has to be published. It's authorized in section five. When this is in connection with the general election, there's kind of a long lead time. I think the legislature understands the county clerk, the election officer, has a lot to do. So you can publish the notice of election as early as ninety days in advance of the election. Normally, it's just forty-five days if it's not a general election. So if this is adopted tonight, soon, really in August, the notice of election could be published for the first time. Just has to be published once a week for two consecutive weeks, advise voters of polling places, what the ballot proposition is. You'll note, and this is a relatively new thing in general bond law, election law, you're supposed to provide additional information. If this was a general obligation bond election, you'd provide mill impact, estimated debt service on bonds and things like that. We don't have that here. It's just a sales tax. So the additional information is really just, what's the expectation for sales tax receipts? And we have some good historical information and we can rely on that to indicate what we expect in the future. So, that notice of election will be provided to the county election officer along with these election documents so they can print ballots and start planning for things. Typically, we'll just connect with the county clerk, the election officer, and discuss when they expect to publish the notice of election. You won't be surprised by this, but you cannot double check enough times. I can think of more than one instance in just the last couple of years where a notice of election did not get published when it was expected. And so, for that reason, we like to publish it a little bit early and then monitor it really closely. So if it doesn't get published, we still have time to publish within the timeframe that I mentioned once a week for two consecutive weeks. That's about it for the background. If those things get published, this proposition will be part of the November fifth election. Results will be what they are. In terms of implementation, you have to give the Department of Revenue at least one calendar quarter of notice of a new sales tax. And Josh touched on this in consideration of your budget process next year. I'm not saying if this passes, we need to send all the information to the Department of Revenue, you know, the second week of November, or after you pass an ordinance to implement the tax. But it would suggest that we do it before your budget process next year because that will be the last thing you all have to do to implement the sales tax. And once it's off with the Department of Revenue, it's their job to continue the implementation of it. That ninety day notice is typically there to give retailers advanced notice, you need to collect this sales tax. If this is passed, it won't be that much work. I mean, the Department of Revenue probably doesn't need ninety days because it's a sales tax that's already being collected. And that's all good, but I would still suggest sending it early. You'll know it's going to be there for part of your budget process for two thousand and twenty-six. And once you've done that, collection would start, again, October one of two thousand and twenty-six, which is the first day of the third, fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-six. So I'll stop there unless, Josh, you wanted to add anything or I'll take questions.
Yeah, if I can just, I want to cue you up on, you and Andrew both, maybe just on an angle to this, and then turn it over to council for questions. So, one of the things that Kevin mentioned was the informational material. And again, it's just to educate your citizenry, even if it's not required or something. You want your citizenry to know exactly what they're voting on. And so, what you had in your packets, and I gave you a slightly different version tonight that just had a different title on it, this is a first draft at an informational educational flyer. And what I was hoping that Kevin and Andrew could potentially comment on, because I know that this is a question that I've received in the past and even recently, but the materials that the city produces, we have to keep them educational in nature. It's not an advocacy bit of material. It's not telling people how to vote. It's explaining what the vote is and the impacts and those sort of things. But then there's the interactions that you all have as elected officials and individuals. So I would like Andrew, Kevin, both, if you guys can speak to, to one, the general structure of informational materials. Do you feel like we're complying with that? Also, maybe get some advice to council members and what do you think they're allowed to do in communicating with citizens about this upcoming vote?
Sure. So I have had a chance to look at what you have in the packet. This is discretionary. What I was describing before with the notice of election is bare bones required by statute. I think this is really good. I didn't see anything, and we talked about this a little bit, the benefits, the title, might tweak it up a little bit, but I didn't see anything in this that's advocating. It's explaining what the existing sales tax has done in the community. Obviously, there's a cost to that. That's the sales tax itself. It explains what it could do for the community in the future. You know, increased tax burden explains it's really just a continuation. It's a new tax, but it's going to function as a continuation, advises, you know, election date, compares rate that the city would have for local sales taxes to other communities. And so, I think this is good. In terms of general rules, statutes, and Josh mentioned this, the city can't fund advocacy campaigns, the vote yes, you know, you see those sorts of things sometimes. City can't be involved in that or a vote no. I would say, and Andrew, you can correct me and add to this, in your individual capacities, you can be for or against this. I mean, you're residents and citizens as well. And so, sometimes that's a fine line. And I've seen this in different settings where somebody might explain, this is me in my personal capacity speaking. I am for this because of whatever. That may be followed by, I'm one vote, I'm one vote in the election, and then I'm one vote for the governing body of the city. But again, that's my personal view. And again, sometimes it's tough to distinguish, you know, if somebody asks you to come speak and they ask you to come speak because you're the mayor or a council member, knowing, are you speaking as a council member, as a representative of the city? Are you giving your own personal opinions? And that's, to me, the fine line you have to walk. And so if you have to preface it and say it out loud, that if you want to know what I personally think about this, this is what it is. If you want to know what the city's position is, we put out this wonderful information flyer and educate yourselves based on that.
Yeah, so I agree with Kevin. I would just maybe emphasize, public funds or resources can't be used to advocate yes or no. Individual council members, you can advocate yes. Have to keep in mind that you can't use public funds or public resources. In other words, citizen couldn't use city facilities or city possibilities are. But just generally, if a citizen would not be able to use city funds or resources, then neither can you.
Okay, I have a question. If somebody says something on the city Facebook page that is for or against, and we pass that on, you know, like it and share it, is that a problem?
So honestly, I would probably say no, because I would consider the city Facebook page to be able to be a forum for either side. The only thing that I might watch out for, and I'd be interested to hear Kevin's thoughts on this, is like a moderator bias for or against?
Yeah.
The ballot question, you would want to avoid that.
Thank you.
I agree. And it's a really good, really good question. And are you, I'm not sure who, are you thinking, well, I might be looking at the city's Facebook page, and I'm the mayor, I have my own face, personal Facebook page. And so when I like it, I'm giving my thought, my personal thoughts. It's not, I'm operating the city's Facebook page.
Right.
And I'm, you know, providing content.
The city has a Facebook page, and so they, they're going to put this on it. And so we all like it, or we, or some of us like it and share it.
Yep.
Is that a no-no?
I, I mean, Andrew makes a great point, one I probably wouldn't have thought of, but I, I agree. I don't think it is a problem, but if for some reason, content gets moderated and, you know, the vehemently no vote group isn't having their information provided or posted on the Facebook page, I mean, that, I don't know how that comes about, but that, I would agree, that would then be the city controlling in a way that somebody would view that as, well, they're clearly advocating for a yes vote because their Facebook page isn't allowing an opposing viewpoint to be discussed.
Listen, so I would, I would push Andrew's wording a little bit further, the public resources. So don't simply think dollars. So your tablets that the city has, that's a publicly provided piece of equipment. Don't start a campaign using your city computers. If you're going to do it, it's all on your personal stuff. So similar sort of thoughts is if you have an official mayor page that is a city page versus a personal Mike Rawlings page as an example. So there's even distinctions in that, is it considered a city account or not? So think broadly about the public resource stuff. If it's anything the city has provided to you, do not use that as a part of whatever advocacy you're going to do. You can provide information and educate and share this freely. It's when you take the next step and start explaining how people should vote, that's where you move into a different territory and have to be more careful.
So Josh, my only question that, like Mike was talking about, is it appropriate to, when you're giving out information, if you see erroneous information out there that's just not correct, and say, well, you know, refer to whatever, these are the numbers, you know? Because a lot of times things gets, they get misconstrued, you know, and then people take that and run with it. I know it's kind of a touchy thing, but I just want to make sure that the public has the correct information, you know? I'm not telling them which way to vote. I just want to make sure that they make their decision with the information that they need.
Absolutely. And that's the entire point of the educational process. So maybe the tool that I would give to you is whenever you have interactions with people, you could say, a vote yes means this, a vote no means this, and you can refer to this as your educational material. That's a very different thing than saying, you should vote yes because. You see, it's tiny bit of wording difference, but that's kind of the fine line between advocacy and educating.
Thanks.
Any other questions, guys?
Mr. Mayor, one question. Josh, just for reminder purposes, I think we discussed this in the strategic session, but the timing of putting it on the general ballot was twofold. One, for budgetary planning purposes, but also for cost savings for the citizens. Is that accurate as well?
Yes. So the other sales tax measures that I recall since I've been here have been done by standalone mail-in, meaning the city is doing it alone, separate from another ballot. And so there is a cost to that, the mailings, the printing of those ballots. I don't remember exactly, but the numbers that I have in my head are ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
That's what I was going to say.
To do a standalone election, something in that range. And so one of the reasons we talked about November was specifically to have those savings. And, you know, you also have the belief that during general election, you get a higher turnout, and so you get a chance to have more people in your community voting on something really important this way.
Perfect. Thanks.
Sounds like we're ready to make a decision and vote on it here.
May I ask a question of Kevin real quick? So this is a resolution. Typically, with ordinances, we do roll call. Is there anything specific in statute that says this has to be a roll call, or is it just a straight up majority vote?
It can be straight up majority vote. If it passes, then it's implemented by ordinance.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, approve resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero eight, authorizing providing for the calling of a question submitted election in the city of Augusta, Kansas, with the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city the special question of levying a one percent citywide sales tax with the purpose of paying the cost of certain public infrastructure projects in the city, have lower on property tax reduction in the city, and general fund enhancement in the city, providing for the giving of notice of said election.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll be working with you for quite a while.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
If I may. So the next part of this with the resolution passed is getting the information out there. And so it sounds like we're far enough advance, in advance, that we've got a little bit of time, if there's any particular tweaking that you want done to this. Again, this was a draft, so we could bring that back. I don't think we have to rush and get this mailed out for a few weeks. So, you want to process that a little bit. If you have other things you'd like the body to entertain before we start these materials, I'm fully comfortable with that. I've also had Shawna working on creating an informational portal on the website that will have this flyer, but we might also be able to enhance some of the information, show more pictures of other projects, just get people more context on there. So it'd probably be good to wait a little bit until that's fully built out before we launch this. But I just wanted to let you know that we don't have to rush and start mailing this out now. But I wanted to leave that to your discretion.
And this may not impact that decision necessarily when you want to finalize that, but I know from experience, the county election officer is going to be swamped through the primary. And so even if we send this to them, you know, before August, whatever the primary date is, they're not going to do much in terms of processing it. So if you all decided, we want to hit this hard, you know, starting mid-August and get the information out there, that probably starts to coincide with when the county election officer is going to think about getting the notice of election published and ballots printed and those sorts of things.
I just want to bring up, I showed the first draft to my wife and to another person, and the first thing they did was they read it was a new sales tax. And so I talked to Josh and Shawna, and they used the word, continue the benefits of our local sales tax. So it's a continuation, even though we have to vote on it and it becomes a new tax, technically, it is a continuation. And that is something that we all need to emphasize, that it's not a new tax, it is a continuation of the existing tax. Because that was, I mean, within seconds, these two people said, whoa, a new sales tax? We're not going for that. So, that's, we got to be careful about how we promote that.
Good point.
Any else have any thoughts? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Matters from and for council. Now, we're going to go into about an hour-long executive session here, probably at the end. But Jake, have you got anything tonight?
No, sir.
Jeff?
I do not.
So? I've got one thing.
Yes.
So I talked to Josh a little bit earlier about Washington and Shirley. We've got a resident, a couple residents that, when it rains really hard, the water comes from down State Street where Charlie Hannah lived, used to live, and then off of the library. And it pools up in their backyard, ends up getting into their basement. And I didn't know if there was, like I said, something we can do, like when we were talking about maybe some kind of berm in the alley or some different drainage or something. Like I said, I know there's a manhole cover in the alley because I went down through there, but it's just one. And it's a flat one. It doesn't have any slats in it to let water through. But I just want to let you know about that.
I'm sure we'll look into it, but it's a continuing problem that was caused by builders pre nineteen sixties. Kip, do you have anything?
I had one thing I wanted to ask with other council members. I'd like to see us put together a city I'd like to see us put together a city employee appreciation pool party. We own the, the pool, and I'd like to see if we could have a party towards the end of, maybe of August. I did send a note to our pool manager today to try to get a couple dates and things, but want to see if towards the end of August, some dates that were available to provide all of our city employees with a little appreciation from us and things to let them invite their families and things to the pool and have a, have a kind of an open house at the pool and let them, let them enjoy it. Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Yep.
I agree. And Mike Martin liked to grill hamburgers.
You have lifeguard.
Shane?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Bob?
I have nothing.
Eric?
Nothing.
Mike?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess an executive session for 60 minutes to discuss an employee's, individual employee's performance to conduct the city manager's second quarter check-in for his annual evaluation. Pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters, exception KSA 754319B1, I ask the city manager Josh Shaw joining the council executive session. The open meeting of governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 8:31 PM.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Executive session where no action was taken?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to exit executive session where no action was taken. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to schedule budget work sessions at 6:00 PM out here at City Hall on June the 24th, July the 8th, and July the 22nd.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to schedule these budget work sessions. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And last, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.